Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. If I can have you, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Begin.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America's stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I have none.
I've got one. I want to table 511 so the council committee members and city staff can go over the recommendations after some current training that's going on.
Okay, any other changes? We have a motion to approve?
A motion to approve the agenda.
Agenda.
I second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Schindler?
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Horn?
And I vote aye. Okay, move on to our next item, number two. We have three tonight: awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations. Our first one is the presentation of our 2023 Firefighter of the Year. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and community. It is my honor to announce firefighter/paramedic Arnold Dangiran as the City of Kalinga Firefighter of the Year for 2023. Arnold has been with the department since March of 2021 and exemplifies what a Kalinga firefighter should be. Arnold's dedication to the department is demonstrated in his daily activity. Not a moment goes by when Arnold is not doing something to make the department better. Whether it is perfecting his own skills or helping others, volunteering for projects, or finding ways to serve the community, Arnold is constantly busy in between running calls, working at making the department better each day. Arnold has taken it upon himself to become a mentor and role model for new employees. Arnold is the one you see taking new hires under his wings and showing them around. He is very patient and calm and always has a positive attitude. Arnold shows up to work every day with a handshake, smile, and a "have a good day." Every single morning he's there. We joke that when Arnold's on duty, the day can't start till Arnold gives everyone a handshake and a "good morning." Arnold has a passion for the fire service and EMS. His paramedic skills are top-notch and is one of the go-to medics for EMS questions and training. His firefighting skills are top-notch as well, and others look to him for advice on training evolutions, equipment, and apparatus usage. And he's gonna be a future driver operator here pretty soon. I don't nominate the firefighter of the year. I believe it should be peers. So Arnold is awarded through this nomination by his peers. According to his peers, Arnold is one of the hardest-working firefighters in the department. He takes pride in his work and takes care of his coworkers. His work, he works hard and is dedicated to his profession. "He just comes to work and does his job," one firefighter said. His dedication and professionalism are noticed and makes them all want to be better. He supports others to help them achieve their personal goals and the goals and visions of the department. Everything he does serves to better himself, the department, and the fire service as a whole. Please join me in congratulating Arnold Dangiran as the 2023 City of Kalinga Firefighter of the Year. And then, on behalf of the city and Mayor Horn, this is a certificate to firefighter/paramedic Arnold Dangiran in recognition of your high standards and continuing excellence in fire protection and emergency medical assistance and to the outstanding contributions you give every day to the, to the entire community.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hi. Thank you, Chief, for the kind words. You know, being, working in the city, I feel truly blessed to meet each and every one of you. Every day I'm on shift and truly grateful what my peers have taught me a lot. So I just want to say thank you again, and I'll see y'all at that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item we have is item number two: Presentation of Proposed Community Workday to Rehabilitate the Gazeebo at Frame Park by Community Scholarship Alliance.
Good evening. My name's Erin Brewer, and I'm here representing Community Scholarship Alliance. Our two other board members, Chad and Janine Wagner, were not able to be here, but Sean being on the board as well. We just wanted to come and tell you a little bit, first of all, of who we are if you don't already know. Community Scholarship Alliance was established in 2016, and we have made it our mission to provide scholarships for students here in the community. Over the last five years, we've pushed really hard, and we've been able to donate over $50,000 to our community. So that's scholarships and other community organizations that we've been able to contribute to. And this year, when we got together and put together our goals for the year, one of the things that we felt, pretty a powerful draw to do, was some community involvement and updating the gazebo at Frame Park. So we utilize this gazebo quite often for most of the events that we, we organize throughout the year or that we attend and sell products at. And so we've felt the need quite a bit with ADA access and just different things. It really needs some updating. We'd like to take the lead on that if we can. Tonight, there's an item on the agenda for you guys to review and to allow us to work with our city manager to be able to figure out the best way to do this. We have some things planned as far as trying to get some volunteers and donated supplies, things like that, but we'd like to get permission and your guys' support in order to do some, some updating and rehabilitating of the gazebo. Thank you.
Okay, our next item is item number three. It is time to actually introduce our new full-time animal control officer, Jonathan Bell. I don't know if any of you have met him or know him, but I wanted to make sure that the community got to see who he was. That way he sees, they see that he's proactive in the community, extremely active. And I know he's, he's got a lot, he's young, he's got a lot of years to make a huge difference. One of the things he wanted to do was try to stay local. He was, he was born and raised here, and he intends on staying here as long as he possibly can. So you want, you want to talk? Want to say something? You don't have to if you want to.
I would like to thank the council, Sean Young, for giving me a chance to help the community by catching dogs, cats, whatever it is that I need to do. And I think, I thank everybody else for giving me the opportunity also. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, John. Okay, next, we're gonna move on to citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern, identify themselves, and use the microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes in accordance with the state open meeting laws. No actions will be taken by the city council this evening, and all items will be referred to staff for follow-up and a report. Citizens' comments submitted in writing to the city clerk by 5:00 PM on the day of the city council meeting shall be distributed to the city council and included in the record. However, they will not be read. We have anybody who'd like to come up?
My name is Wendy. I'm here representing Pepetree Apartments in District Four. We're, I've, I am the community leader of the Kalinga Tenant United Organization, Tenant Union for the Pepetree Apartments. We are, we only moved, me and my daughter moved in there because there was no other available housing for us to move into. That was not too high and out of reach for us to get into. The reason I am here is that our property management company and the managers of, that manages our complex has given all the tenants a rent increase. We, the people that live here, know that this rent increase is wrong for many, many reasons. One thing is that this will be a hardship for any of us. The rent being raised for me and my daughter's apartment from 925 to 1035 with an increase of 10.6%. With that increase, they gave us a 45-day notice. And California Civil Code AB 1482 requires a 60-day notice for any rent increase over 10%. We want, we, the renters who live in rent here in Kalinga need you, the city council of Kalinga, to implement city ordinances to start protecting its tenants, including citywide rent controls, troll ordinance, and an enforcement board to hold its landlords and property managers and owners accountable for the habituality issues and proper, and for proper increases. Civil, California Civil Code 14, 1941.2 says, "The failure of a landlord to provide such conditions can lead to violations of the law and impose civil, and impose civil and at times even criminal liability upon the landlord." It's the tenant's rights to hold them accountable. We, what this habituality means, it is, it is suitable and good enough to live and meets building codes and provides bare living requirements. We don't have that in our complex or anywhere close to it. A, a place that is not habitual, a place is not habitable if it has substantial problems. Boy, do we have substantial problems. Front doors don't close properly, or we have broken windows covered with plywood. Some units have major electrical problems. Ours apartment, for, for example, we've had to call the fire department out when we first moved in there because the electrical box was too hot and it burnt our hands, and they said it should have burnt down by the time the, the temperature was 270 plus. There was roach infestation. There's leaking ceilings and roofs. One unit I was asked to come in and look at had a hole in the kitchen where the fluorescent lighting was, and there was no light there, and wires were hanging down. People had young children living there with them. I can go on and on about the living conditions there, but if you guys have been through there or driven into the apartments, you could see the way we're living. Unfair living conditions and rent increases are not right. I'm asking you to find a way to help make this and many other property owners and managers in the City of Kalinga be held accountable for the wrong actions. The people of our complex are afraid that they will try to push us out of our homes, and we do not want these unannounced increases of rent to throw off our finances and in return to be living in the streets. Don't get me started on that. I will save that homeless issues for you guys later. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel? Anything? Okay, we'll move on to the next item, number four, public hearings. We have none tonight. We'll move on to five, consent calendar. We have 12 items tonight. We, we ended up tabling one of the items for following meeting. So we've got 12 items tonight. What would counsel like to do?
I'd like to-
Eleven?
I'd like to pull off 5.8 and move it to discussion, and just to add a few items to the, to that. Won't be long.
Anything else, counsel? Good. Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent calendar with the changes? I'll make, I'll make the motion to approve the consent calendar with moving item number 5.8 to 6.1 and tabling number 11.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
Mary, do you want to come up?
Are you sure?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay. Mayor Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Councilman Schindler?
Aye.
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez?
Aye.
Yes.
I had three things that I filled out papers for, but it, they're not, the, the one thing about peddlers, I just want to get this clear. If someone comes to your house and they just stick a note in your door, like a flyer, they don't need a license for that.
So they don't need a peddler's license if they're selling items? They should still have a city business license.
What if they're selling services?
If their services will be provided in Kalinga, they should have a business license.
Okay. But how do we know that if they're just sticking a paper in our door?
You probably wouldn't.
Okay.
This is just amending the peddler's ordinance. So right now, a peddler, they need a peddler's license if they're coming to leave items on your door to sell services that would be at a future date, and this changes that. So if they're not making contact with the property owner and they're just leaving something, they don't need a peddler's license.
Okay. Then on the two other items, there was something about Los Catos Creek, I mean the park, and homelessness and mental health. And my concern is that I want to see the council actually do something or address this in an aggressive manner. Three years or so ago, we went around about Los Catos Park with Buddy Mendez, and we made a little bit of progress, but I think everybody just sort of relaxed, and now we're really in the woods with this. It's, it's in horrible shape now, and there needs to be some accountability from our county, and it's up to our town to do that. We're the only ones. We're the farthest west, and we're neglected. And when people say, you know, money, well, we pay money. They get our tax money. And, and the same with the mental health and homeless response. It's not right what is happening. And I'm not saying the city needs to fix it, but you guys have the voice to make that happen. So I would like to see the council, I don't know what you're, what you're planning to do, but I would like to see the council take some sort of action to direct our manager or someone to find out why we're not getting the contracted, we have a contract with the county, and they do not meet their contract. They come up with bogus reasons.
So if you'd like to talk about this after the meeting, I can talk with you. I do have some information on that.
I just wanted to make sure that it gets heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, we'll move on to item number six: Ordinance, Presentations, Discussion, and Potential Action Items. This will be on the annual review of the City of Kalinga Council Rules and Procedures. Vosberg.
So I just wanted to, I wanted to add two parts to that, and this is actually just gonna require the city attorney to go and, and bring this back to us. So this wouldn't be something that would be decided tonight. But I wanted to add, the state is making changes to campaign finance rules, and if we don't come up with some rules of our own, then we have to do what the state wants. And, you know, it's usually not a good thing if the state wants something. So I'm gonna request that we come back with changes having concern to campaign finance. And then the second thing is, I want, when someone, you know, vacates their seat on council, I want to put in what we're going to do about that. And so I'd like if we could, you could bring back some options on that as well. And that's it.
So the reason, I know the reason, one of the reasons he's bringing this item up is because if a council member leaves and they leave early in the term, midterm, they have to rerun again. And we want to try to figure out about going around that because of that extra cost. It's, it's quite a bit of a cost. And if we can do it without doing that, it's gonna make it a lot easier and, and save the city quite a bit of money. So that's one of the things we're just trying to look into and see if that's possible to do. Okay, and then there's another item I want to put on here as well. It's, it's in our, it's in our code of conduct, but I wanted to have it pulled up so we can kind of discuss it. Two meetings ago, it was on the 10th of last month, myself and Mayor Protim was unable to attend the meeting, and nobody was quite sure of who should be running the meeting. And we're gonna make sure that it's worded in there correctly. When either one of us aren't here, the, what the procedure shows right now is city clerk will start the meeting, and once it gets going, then the first person to the left will have a chance, if they would like to run the meeting, they can run the meeting. And if they don't, then the person next, all the way down to the end, until the meeting is finished. So we're, I just want to make sure to put that in there because it was a little bit of confusion. So, and, and I also wanted to tell you guys, sorry I wasn't here at the last meeting. I was recuperating from some pretty major back surgery. So that's why I wasn't here. Anything else, counsel? No? Okay. So do we want to bring this back to a closed session meeting, or?
It can't be closed session. It'll be on a future-
Just for the adjusted, okay.
Yeah, I guess if the council-
So bring it back.
Direction to bring it back.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Do you want to do it the next meeting or a month?
It'll be a little bit because the city attorney's gonna need to-
I would say we'd give the city attorney the time that he needs and then bring it back when he's ready.
So it'll probably be the first meeting in March.
March, okay. Okay. Sounds good. Okay, we'll move on to our next item, number seven, announcements. First one, city manager's announcements.
Thank you. So today, Jonathan and Yaneth, our code enforcement officer, attended a training in Fresno on animal control, and I got a text of some good news that they were able to obtain something for the city today. But since he's here, I'm gonna put him on the spot and let him walk up here and tell you what they were able to get for the city today at this training.
So like the city manager said, me and Yaneth went to a, sorry, I lost some words, a training in Fresno, and we got picked out of a drawing to win $5,000 for the City of Kalinga. So-
Specifically for animal control.
Yeah.
And then I told Mary I would bring up, so today Shannon and I went to Fresno, and we met with one of the county administrative office assistants and talked about homeless and mental health services that are offered in Kalinga. So homeless services are contracted out through Kingsview countywide. They do come out to Kalinga. They don't have a regular schedule, but they're going to add a regular schedule. So I used to get, there was a woman there in that position before, and she would send me like a monthly, maybe every other month, an email that summarized when they would come out, on the days they came out, how many people they made contact with, who refused services, why they refused services. And then when she left, I stopped getting that report. So we talked about that. We are gonna start receiving that report again, and then they're going to establish a regular schedule for Kingsview to be out in Kalinga. It will be monthly, so it's not more frequently than that. But once a month, they will come out to Kalinga and make contact with the homeless population, and then they're going, I asked them for numbers. So in about three to four months, they're gonna follow up to try to give us an estimated count of how many we have. And then they're going to prepare some information for us. So if somebody came in to City Hall looking for homeless services or mental health services, the mental health services are contracted to Turning Point, which has an office here downtown. They do take Medi-Cal insurance, and if somebody is homeless, then they are, Kingsview helps them get Medi-Cal so they can get services at Turning Point. So she is gonna send some information on that. We're gonna start getting those reports from them. So hopefully, we'll have a little bit more accountability of what services we're receiving from the county. And then the other thing is Sean and I had a meeting yesterday with the engineering department at Fresno State, so we have an exciting project that's gonna be happening. It will take a while. But the city purchased a vacant lot across from Ron's barber shop. That's how, the best way to describe the lot. And we're going to turn it into an outdoor food court area. So it will have something similar to like C-trains with commercial kitchens and food truck connections with picnic benches and shade sales and string lights and yard games and all of this stuff. And it, it's gonna be a big project, and it's gonna take a while. But we reached out to Fresno State's engineering department, asking if the students would take on the design project. So they're starting it in the current semester, and it's gonna be their capstone project for the engineering student. So we should have some plans. I think he said 30% this semester with the final plans being done by December. And that, you know, is a service that we're going to get from the Fresno State students, and it's just nice because we'll be able to have those ideas. And I'm sure there are some local Kalinga students in the engineering program somewhere. So it'll be nice that they'll be able to come in and see like a project they were able to help design. And that's all I have.
Does counsel have any announcements or reports?
Yeah. So I hear you, Mary. This has been a long thing with- This has been a long thing with our county supervisor that has decided that Kalinga is an island in the middle of nowhere, and this has been going on for at least eight years that I know of, trying to get that park fixed. And so, yeah. This isn't something that, that we're just gonna drop the ball on, so I just wanna let you know that that's my announcement, we're not gonna, we're not gonna drop the ball on this stuff.
I'm with Councilman Vosberg. Last year, during the storms, I went and took pictures to them and see if they would do something. I took them pictures about how, how the storm messed it up and how before it messed it up, and supposedly it got to Buddy Mendez, but I haven't gotten a response. I emailed them, I told their staff, but you're right. I think not only two, but I think all of us need to go to his office and present ourselves and, you know, put the weight on him. Exactly. I would love to see even Mineral Springs get some renovation too. I mentioned Mineral Springs to them too. They had no idea, the staff had no idea we had parks out here. So it's pretty sad that, you know, we got looked at like that, but I hope we can all come together and put some weight on them.
Okay, and the next up is me. I don't have any announcements right now. So we'll move on to future agenda items. We have any future agenda items?
So I would like a future agenda item to make the information that we get from Kingsview available on our website and to reach out to our, the Westside Family Preservation and give them the information as well, maybe post it with the library, do a, you know, we wanna make sure that the people that need the services get it, so if we can have some kind of advertising on that.
I'd like to add on to his. Is there any way we can get a price and cost of what it would take to, and one of the windows, maybe put a monitor or something that goes through everything, just like we have our sign on the edge of town that tells everybody that's going on through the week and through the month?
And then the other thing that I would like is to, did they give us an ETA on when they thought that FEMA might be able to give, anything like that?
They did not.
They didn't? So we could like be waiting for this forever, and, you know, this is only one instance. Before the, before it was wrecked, they had already closed it, and they used the fact that they said that there was no water in the creek, so the pump kept going bad, and so they locked the restrooms, and that effectively locked the entire park. And so I would like to look at some kind of legal action, what we can do at the county level, because they aren't gonna do this on their own. We've been working on this for eight years. Something needs to happen. This needs to change, and it's not something that, you know, our entire community grew up at that park, you know, doing things, and so I don't, this is just like a look to see if there's anything legally that we could do, you know, in order to speed up the process, you know, so.
Anything else, counsel? None? Okay, we'll move on to the next item, number nine, closed session. We have none tonight. With that being said, meeting is adjourned.